All right, this is the regularly scheduled Thursday, August 11, 2016 Nantucket Board of Appeals meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Michael makes the motion. Kiram seconded. Any further discussion? No?
All in favor say aye.
Okay, how about an approval of the minutes of June 9 and July 14? I read them, they looked okay to me.
I read them as well, and everything that my associates correct.
I'm glad you're comfortable. All right, so does somebody want to make a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Go ahead.
I will second it.
This is for both June 19th, 9th, and July 14th. Okay, Lisa made the motion, Michael seconded it. Any further discussion? No? All in favor say aye. All right, so old business, Rugged Scott, 5103 LLC, release of lot 41 from the covenant for the applicant.
Mary Ann Hanley for the applicant. As we're asking for release of one lot, as you can see from Eleanor's staff report, we're on track with our affordables versus our market rate units. And if we get this release, we'll get a building permit. We've got three affordables finishing up with their engineering at Huntington Home. So by the end of the year, we should have five market rate and three affordables going. And we have one affordable that's available for sale, if you know anybody that would like to buy it.
Wasn't, didn't the lottery just take place?
Yeah, they're still, but they still have to, the housing authority has to evaluate all, everything, so.
I mean, but could literally somebody still get into that process at this point for that house?
Uh, you know, I'm not sure, I'd have to check with Josh, but we had someone that was in line for it, but then he had the, I guess, the fortune of not meeting the income requirements anymore. He was making too much money, so.
That's 22.
It's kind of a double edged sword, but.
Yeah. Okay, so Eleanor, you sort of vetted all the?
Yes, I spent hours and hours going back, looking for the registry fees, building department, and my own file to keep, if anybody wants to see it, it's a very colorful tracking sheet of what's going on with affordable market rates. I communicate regularly with Josh Folsner about what the plans are. And as you know, whenever they need to file a building permit, they have to go through us for the HDC related approval. So I have a, you know, very organized tracking.
And it's all kosher?
I feel confident in software.
Okay. I'm willing to rely on that. So can I get a motion to grant relief as requested? All we're doing is basically releasing one lot, correct?
Right, so that we can get a building permit for it.
I'll second.
Okay, so, well, so it'll be the five regular members voting, just FYI. So any further discussion? Anybody in the audience? No? All in favor say aye.
Great, I have a release.
I want to say that you have to sign it right now. Sign it out.
No, Lisa.
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So 0416 is continued September 8, 2016. Gerald Vento is also continued to September 8, 2016. So we are on 2816. There are Rosenberg, Michelle Cold, Southern Gardner Street for the applicant, Mr. Cohen. There are some.
I was gonna say that, I don't think, was this for the 14th of July?
Yes.
I wasn't even in the room.
Jim remembers, he remembers it, so he said he's in.
Okay, the problem is that two of the members no longer feel comfortable sitting on it.
And I wasn't here, so I didn't hear the testimony.
So.
Who were the members sitting?
Well, again, there were no sitting members as much as we all sit now. And we're all supposed to be paying attention.
But I was, I left them.
There was no vote. It says sitting members, but that's not really the case.
You have enough, you have Jim and Jeff.
Right. So you're good?
I'm good.
Yes, there's five.
So who's not?
I can't sit, because I wasn't here.
No, that leaves.
Five.
Oh, you have five, I'm using a new map.
I'm satisfied with the board. I think that you are all here for the hearing, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, everybody good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, Stephen, go ahead.
Okay, so I think we heard a lot about this last time, and I think we sort of got off track a little bit. And I think if we boil it down to what it is from a zoning point of view, hopefully you will be eminently convinced that you should grant the permit. And what I mean by that is that this is very simply a pre-existing, non-conforming lot in the old historic district, which is a common occurrence, okay? It has a currently non-consisting, non-conforming use of a garage, although that use is pre-existing. It's not a violation, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming use.
Was the, was it subdivided under 81L?
It was, yes.
So it was made non-conforming by the applicant, not that it matters.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it, well, it doesn't matter, but it's also not a violation. It's a, it's a, it's a non-conforming use, but there's no violation because it's a pre-existing, non-conforming use, in the same way that the undersized lot is a pre-existing, non-conforming use, dimensional issue, as opposed to a violation. So we have a structure that is essentially a tin shed that has been approved for demolition by the HDC and is going to be converted into a relatively modest dwelling. And if you would not interrupt, that'd be great. Thank you.
Sorry, yeah, no, no, please.
It is a relatively modest dwelling that is entirely consistent with what's in the neighborhood, the number of bedrooms, the size of the kitchen, the color of the walls, none of that is before you, and none of that is anything you have jurisdiction over, which I think you already know. You know, you're only approving the use and the structure. So we are obviously changing the use from a garage to a dwelling, which is a use that you should, which is a change that you should approve, and I think the board felt comfortable with. And then the question just becomes, where is the building? The building is currently 1.3 feet from the lot line and is being proposed to be moved three feet from the lot line. That move is something that I think you regularly approve, some, making something more or less non-conforming. And there's nothing negative about doing that. Then the question becomes, is there something about the new building that is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? And I think in this case, this dwelling, there's nothing about it that is detrimental to the neighborhood. It is entirely consistent, and we provided information that shows that the neighborhood has relatively large oversized structures, many of which are already in the setback because most of them predate zoning by, you know, 100, 200 years. There's, there's nothing that we're proposing that is outside the norm, never mind substantially detrimental. And so then the question becomes, does the board do one of, so, and, you know, there was some question last time is whether or not the applicant was willing to not have the second story in the setback. In other words, keep the first floor in the setback and slide back the second story. The applicant is not willing to do that and had some informal conversations with the HDC members and received some fairly significant pushback about, about making that choice, that the, the way the building is designed was very, a 10-month process, and the, what he heard informally from the HDC was they may be willing to move it, but they're not willing to redesign it in that way. That that bump out prevents the building from being sort of a big, long slab on, on one side. So that was very important. So he does not want to go back to the HDC. So then we have a few choices. We can either approve it at the three-foot level, or you can deny it. And if you deny it, he will build it at the five-foot line or appeal. But I think there's no substantial difference in the impact on the neighborhood, and there's no basis really for the board to deny it, because I haven't heard anything that suggests that having it one point or the other is any, is any negative. Now, the neighbors may not like the progress, but it is a permit that you regularly grant. And in fact, what we're talking about is a building that overlooks another tin garage right next door. It's not as if there is a light and air issue, it's not like it's a, you know, on a pond or a playground, or, you know, like, it's, it's a building overlooking another tin garage. And someday, that tin garage is going to be converted to a dwelling as well, and it's in the setback, and it's going to be coming in looking for the same relief. And they will either build in the setback, or move outside the setback, or whatever. But I think, you know, in town, you regularly grant permits for people to convert structures into dwellings, and you regularly grant relief for work in the setback. And I think that what's being proposed of moving it back a little bit is good. And I think actually, if you slide it over two more feet, that there are two negatives. If we, if we just, we, we don't need any relief to slide it over to five feet. If we did that, it's entirely conforming and needs no zoning relief and would have no conditions. But it has two negatives. One is, from a perception point of view, it kind of crowds the other building. Not, not in a, you know, major way, but it gets a little crowded, and we'd rather not do it. Is that a big issue for you? Maybe not. But it gets a little crowded. And then the other thing is that, but it doesn't have any setback concerns. We can do it regardless based on zoning. Because I think, as you know, the interior lot line on a 4181L allows for those non-conformities. So the second issue is that there is a really beautiful 150-year-old tree there, and when you slide that building over two more feet, we would have to take some fairly significant limbs out of that tree. Is that, again, a reason why you should grant the relief? No. But it's something we'd really prefer not to do. So, you know, what we're looking at is a situation in which there's a lot of hysteria, but really no negative that I've heard that is something that this board regularly, actually denies permits on. And I think that's the choice you have to make. Have you heard anything that justifies denying this permit because it is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? I don't, I don't know that it is. And I would ask you to grant the relief as applied for, and, and obviously, my client would be happy to take conditions like no construction in the summer and, and other standard type of conditions.
Thank you. Michael?
Eleanor. In order to, is the relief automatic when you go from a non-conforming use, i.e. garage, to a house? They don't even have to be here?
Well, they're demolishing the garage, so they're eliminating the non-conforming use.
Okay, but they don't need to?
Yes, that's allowed by right to.
Okay. So in the old days, they'd have to come here to demolish it?
It would be part of the decision that, and the bylaw now reads with the amendment, I believe this year, right? That you're allowed 12 months' calendar year to have the lot be vacant without being merged with the adjacent lot.
Yeah.
So you're allowed to construct and report that time. And extensions may or may not be solved, I'm not sure how that's gonna happen.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me piggyback that, if Eleanor would allow it, which is that there are two issues. One is avoiding a merger of the pre-existing lots, and they allow for a 12-month window to do that when you demolish something. But then I think, sort of your question is, can you make something non-conforming, conforming without relief? And the answer is yes. Which used to, you are correct, used to not be the case. And I believe that changed about two, three years ago.
So I just wanted to make sure that you were, that you were correct, that if you conform to the setbacks, you don't even have to be here.
That, that's right. We need, but.
But you want to make sure you have your building permit in hand before you tear down the garage.
Yeah, yes, we do not want to create a situation where we have a non-conforming lot and have created a merger or other problem. That is good advice. But, you know, my client doesn't want to be in a position where you have denied the permit, and then he has forced to either appeal or, or build. Because, you know, frankly, I don't know that this board has ever denied this kind of relief within this kind of factual scenario.
I, I disagree. I think we have certainly, well, we haven't denied it. I agree with you there in large measure, but I think through discussion, the applicants generally get the idea that it's not going to work at this level, so they make it conforming, if you will, or at least that portion of it that's in question, so.
So I think that's, that's essentially the.
An outright denial, we probably have it, but.
I guess, what I remember is we've never turned down going from a pre-existing, non-conforming use to an allowable use, and that's where we got rid of that zoning, and so you don't have to come here anymore.
Right. And frankly, building, making something less non-conforming by moving it out doesn't need zoning relief at all. And making something, making an alteration within the non-conformity without expanding the nature of the non-conformity, in other words, making it longer, does not, is something that can be granted at the staff level. And generally, the, the standard that you have worked out is that if something gets taller and gets another level, that you, that you want to see it. And I think that makes a lot of sense, and that's what we're talking about here. So then the question becomes, is the second story of this structure so substantially detrimental to the neighborhood that you should deny the relief? I think that's essentially what this boils down to.
That's what we're gonna hear from the neighbors, is?
I, I don't know what you're gonna hear from the neighbors, but that's the only change that need, that really needs relief from you, that's not either allowed by right or through staff.
Okay. And I assume that your, your client is willing to live by no demolition in the summer, no exterior building in the summer?
Yes.
It sort of surprises me, I have to admit, that for this much space, your client would prefer to be here with any conditions than just do it as a matter of right.
I think what he'd like to do is try to avoid having to cut major limbs out of that tree and try to not crowd the other house, and that's worth, apparently, my time to be here and, and your time as well.
Well, he's crowding what's gonna happen on the other lot as a result. Anyway, let's hear from the neighbors. Please come up and identify yourself.
Good afternoon for the butters and the neighbors, Rota Wyman. The subject lot, as you know, was created in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 8, 81L. When this lot was created, it should have been done in such a way to have the footprint of this building conform to the five-foot setback. They had that option, and they didn't opt to do that. The applicant should be forced to redraw this plan in order to comply to the five-foot setback. The applicant's counsel has said they don't want to go back to the HDC. That should not be a reason for this board to approve this, because they don't want to go back to the HDC. This project, and again, unlike what my brother has said, has a huge negative impact on this neighborhood. I understand that they have the right to do it, but they don't have the right to not meet the setback. The most obvious downside of all of this is safety. As you know, driving up and down that street, there is no parking, and there's going to be an incredible chaotic mess there when the construction starts with parking. The increase in traffic and the proximity of the building next to it is a definite safety issue. And again, Mr. Cohen indicated that the neighbor next door, whom I represent, will probably be back here for the same thing. They will not be back here. They own a garage, and they have two cars stored in that garage, and that's what Mrs. Brock has done for many years. She has no intentions of building on that lot. I understand that the applicant received the planning board approval to go forward with this and is only here to get relief from the five-foot setback. I mean, that is definitely clear. Meeting a three-foot setback would improve the existing conditions. Meeting the three-foot setback would not improve the existing conditions. The applicant's counsel argued that it's an improvement going from 1.3 feet to three feet. Not a good argument at all. And they don't want to go back to the HDC. And these are their two substantial arguments, and I would hope that the board doesn't feel that that's enough to approve this. The board, and again, I think the board's been consistent with new construction not to allow any kind of relief unless there is a reason why. And the reason why here is just not adequate at all. You know, you've heard the reasons, and those are not reasons to allow a three-foot setback here. You know, I would ask you to uphold the bylaw, as is what this board should be doing, and going back to the HDC should not be a good reason to turn around and approve this. If you decide this project is not more detrimental, which we clearly think it is, and you do find it, to grant the relief, we definitely want a whole series of restrictions on here. You've already mentioned the no construction in the summertime. We also want fencing up and signs up on the property saying no parking, because there is no place to park there, and construction vehicles are going to be all over the properties here. I'd ask you to please uphold the bylaw and deny this application. We haven't heard any good reasons why that should be approved. And make sure that the five-foot setback is adhered to. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak?
My name is John Sayer, and my good wife, who is with me, owns 10 Gardner Street. We are not legally a butters, but we certainly look directly into that proposed four-bedroom house. I think, quite frankly, that if the owner of the property wanted to have more space, a garage apartment would have been appropriate. The law permits it, and there is no reason in the world, in my mind, how you can make a case for doing anything other than a garage apartment. However, I understand, we're not supposed to be talking about the original approvals, so I will not. But we do very, very violently oppose the setback provision that they are asking for. When we built a garage apartment, we got no relief, and we also had a tree. And they came around and looked at the tree, I don't know, council didn't mention whether they had inspected the tree or not, but they came around, looked at the tree, said, "We don't care." And so we built a smaller garage. I fear that our neighbors are faced with the same type of situation. At least, I certainly hope so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm the other half. I'm Ruth Sayer, and I live at 10 Gardner Street. And we've owned the house for 25 years, we're seasonal residents, and we care very much about the neighborhood. I frankly am very surprised, I know that it didn't happen at this level, that a non-conforming lot would be created. The way the property was originally presented, the garage provides adequate parking for number seven. And if they go forward building this, as you know from looking at the plans, there really is no parking anymore for number seven. There will be an easement on 7A, or whatever you want to call it, so that the car for seven can park in front of the other one. My question is, does that reduce the width of the property? If there's an easement? I don't know. I'm not a zoning lawyer. I also have to speak to the changing character of the neighborhood, because having lived here for 25 years, the traffic on Gardner Street has gotten progressively worse, as I'm sure you're all aware. It's an arterial road, there's no way it can be one-way, there is no parking. On summer days, sometimes the traffic to get through the monument where it necks down backs up all the way to the antique fire station. And by building another dwelling here, you're attracting more traffic, and I think it's going to be a real safety hazard. There are fortunately no really young children living there now, although my grandchildren range in age from six to 14, and I would worry about them getting hit. Adding a four-story dwelling is, I think, really inconsistent with the spirit of this law, which says that it allows for extension, alteration, or change. I don't think that building a four-story house, because it is four stories, there is plumbing in the basement, too. I don't think that is an extension, an alteration, or a change. I think that's tearing an existing structure down and not rebuilding it in any way, you are changing it. And I don't think that's in the spirit of what this law says. And I would say that if you wanted to do anything, build a garage, put guest space over the garage if you need it, but don't build another house. That's not what this, this law says. And above, about, you must respect the five-foot setback on the northerly sideline. And let's see. And I finally would like to say that I know that people that own property want to make money off of it, but sometimes the money shouldn't be, shouldn't trump the preservation or the character of this neighborhood. So I hope you'll keep all those things in mind, particularly the five-foot setback. Thank you.
Thank you. Just go to the mic, so you're on, and identify yourself, please.
I'm Jordan Goodman. We live at 11 Gardner Street. I would like to just add a little bit more emphasis to the question of the parking as it's proposed for that dwelling. That house will sleep a minimum of eight people with four bedrooms and possibly as many as 10, which means that the people who buy that dwelling after it's sold are gonna need to have two cars, because you can't fit eight or 10 people in one car anymore these days. Which means there'll be no parking, or inadequate parking at that dwelling, because of the necessity of having two cars to get those people around town. So I think that should be kept in mind, that this is gonna make for a tremendous amount of additional congestion, as well as great difficulty for those people who are going to want to rent whatever property they end up putting on that, on that land. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No. Did you have a question?
Just an observation and maybe a question. How many parking spaces are required?
One.
Okay. So there may be stacked parking for two, there may be just one car. For four bedrooms, it's legal. So the question that I raised for the.
One of those, excuse me, one of those parkings is gonna go to the other house. So it's gonna be two-one parking for each of the two houses.
Which is what the bylaw allows. So technically, it's.
I'm not talking to you. I'm talking in terms of.
Well, but that's all we can deal with. We understand the congestion issue, but we cannot necessarily take that into account.
Unless there's something I'm missing, and maybe there is, because I know there's a tree involved, and I don't know if it's, town has an easement on the tree or anything like that. But the question I have for the neighbors is, with approval from the zoning board of appeals, we're gonna protect the neighbors regarding building in the summer, which, which would include having a truck pumping cement on the side of the road, in, partially in the road, in the months of June, July, or August, and I'm not trying to scare anyone. It would also have lumber, lumber deliveries in the summer, and I think it would be very annoying.
It would be dangerous.
It would be dangerous, that's correct, but that's out of our hands. If, if we issue a special permit on this, then we're not gonna let them do any of that, including digging a hole in the months of, it's Memorial Day through.
Labor Day.
Labor Day. So I would, just thinking, I'm thinking as a neighbor, and that's including not demolishing the building. And I have a question for Mr. Cohen. At your proposed three and a half feet.
Three feet, yeah.
Three feet, excuse me. How would you protect the property line during construction?
So obviously, I'm not an engineer, but I know that there are two issues. One is that we would likely put up a construction fence or something like that to delineate the property line to make sure that there was no encroachment. And then obviously, we would have to put in place some kind of shoring to make sure that there was, there was no overdig or, or undermining. And, you know, Jeff knows all about that. It's, it's easily done with essentially plywood or steel or whatever is appropriate, depending on what's going on. And there are provisions in the building code, which I think all of you are familiar with, that require, when you're doing vibratory work on small lots, to, to follow those provisions. And there's liabilities and penalties and whatever involved, without getting into the details of it, I think the law already provides for it.
Because the board has. Because the board has mandated in the past that the board wants to know in advance what, how that's going to be mitigated. And if the board's not involved, there's no mitigation through this board about how the property lines are protected from an overdig is what we're particularly concerned about.
Yeah. I guess I would use an example of the planning board, where there's usually a preconstruction meeting where the planning staff has to sign off in advance on a construction protocol that shows that there is an adequate area and the protections are in place so that the board and the permit doesn't get caught up in the minutia of it, but that informed persons and including, you know, the town engineer if necessary, are involved in greenlighting that the protocols are in place. And I think that, you know, certainly the plus department could provide that role if the board wanted to go in that direction. It's easy for me to volunteer them, but, you know, they do it all the time for the planning board.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of comments at the...
Go ahead.
If I can keep it brief. So I want to just clarify one thing that my sister-in-the-law stated, which is that we have sort of created this need to be in the setback because of the way we drew the line. And I want to clarify that that is not the case, that the, that the, we can meet, with the house can be built regardless of where it is on this setback because the 4181L process does not require us to comply with the lot line on the other side. They are allowed to be basically up on that line. And we have at the planning board received approval for two or three different A and R plans that would draw that line essentially either way. So we are not essentially painting ourselves into a corner and then coming to you and saying, "Hey, you have to give us the relief." You do not have to give us the relief. I don't think that you should deny it, but we are not creating that burden and trying to shove it down your throat. The other thing is that, you know, what the neighbors have done, I think, is prove my case, which is that there's nothing about the second story of this building that is such a danger. Their complaints are construction and traffic and residential use and all those kind of things, but that's going to happen anyway. I mean, it's in town. It's dense. The traffic is a problem either way. The zoning parking requirements are what they are. The typical parking provided in this area is what it is. Some lots have no spaces. Most people park on the street and have more than one car. I mean, the complaints that they're talking about are actually commonly occurring residential use and construction. That's going to happen anyway. There's going to be four bedrooms in this house anyway. There's going to be construction anyway. The question is, are you going to allow my client to build at the three-foot line and put conditions in place, which we're willing to work with? Or are you going to deny it? In which case, I don't really think that there has been articulated a substantially detrimental to the neighborhood standard, just that they would prefer that this not be, happen, which I sympathize with, but is not the case. So I would ask you to grant the relief. We could certainly commit to no construction in the summer. We could certainly commit to protecting the property line, both for overdig and for trespass. I'm not entirely sure what Rota means by no parking signs, but, you know, whatever necessary protocols and protections would be appropriate, I think, are in everyone's interest to make this go well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
May I ask council for clarification of something you said?
Yes.
I had thought from my reading of the zoning code that front, rear, and sideline setbacks would all bite. And I think I heard you say that on the side where the original house is, that we didn't have to do a five-foot setback?
That's correct.
So why is that?
Sure. Under the 4181L protocol, you essentially get a free bite of the apple and do not have to comply with zoning in any way except for one thing, which is that you cannot create a new nonconformity based on a structure that is not pre-56. So in other words, you couldn't create a ground cover over it based on a 1990 building or something like that.
But we're talking about setbacks, not...
Right. So what I'm saying is that you can, the new interior lot line does not have to meet setbacks.
So in other words, the newly-created, nonconforming lot can have a building right up next to the property line between the original house?
The newly-created house can? Or the old house? Or the old building can be right up to the lot?
The old.
The old building, not the newly-created one. So I think there was...
Right. So we have, right, so because we have at least, you know, 10 feet or something there, we have the ability to slide that lot line over.
Well, not really, Steve. If you look at it, the lot line is tight to the steps of the existing building. This is at the front right corner, as you would be looking at the building. There's only five point, five feet there now, so it's not, you're not, you're not, I don't think you're correct.
You couldn't shrink the building.
Yeah, the building would have to be slightly smaller, to your point. So I think, I think you slightly, probably not on purpose, misrepresented that.
No, I, we can slide the building over and meet the setbacks.
I don't see how, but then I think you should do it. That's my personal feeling. I don't, I think we've been fairly consistent on new, no.
And that line can't move.
The interior line can.
And that's the free throw, free throw.
I mean, I think we've been fairly consistent on new construction should meet the setback. So I see Michael's point about, there is some protection to the neighborhood if you want us to impose conditions. Having said that, I don't think anybody in their right mind would want to build this thing in the middle of the summer anyway, because it would be just a nightmare for them as well as you. And they're not going to get a permit, obviously, for this summer, so it's probably going to be done in the off-season. Some of you may live there year-round, I don't know.
But the house currently is a rental. I can't imagine making that...
No, I'm talking about you, not that, not the house.
How we come up with it.
Anyway, having said that, Rota, you want to speak again?
You know, just briefly, before you make a decision, you know, Ed, what I, what you just said, I think is totally true. In my experience before this board for 30-plus years, if it's new construction, I think you've always asked to comply to the sideline yard setback if it's possible to do it. And in this situation, you've heard that it is possible to do it. There's no reason why it can't be done and they could have drawn that differently so that the plan showed that they could meet the setback. And now they're asking for relief because they chose to draw a plan that was different. And unless there's a really good reason why they can't do it, then you should deny this. Thank you.
Rota, have there been any discussions between the agreed parties? Have you guys tried to work it out?
Yes. I mean, I've talked...
I would think there'd be somewhere in the middle that you guys...
May I finish, please? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yes, I have talked to Mr. Cohen about it, but I've also talked to my clients about it and they feel very strongly that there's a real safety issue here. And they also feel very strongly that because they're able to do it, they should do it. And if it were a situation where they couldn't, for whatever reason, then I think we'd be much more inclined. But they're willing to take the chance of having them build in the summer, if that's what they're inclined to do, but they want you to comply with the bylaw and not give them relief. So yes, there have been discussions.
Okay, that was a great question that Mr. Thayer just had, because I've been thinking about the same thing, that what your, the neighbors are going to get out of this, if the building is ever so slightly modified downward, is insignificant to the amount of headache that they could go through if this building is constructed in the summer. And I would, I could vote either way on this right now. I'd vote with the majority, probably, but my recommendation would be that we continue this for a month so both parties can get together and see if there is any common grounds.
Well, you've done that already.
Don't everybody talk at once, please. Let Rota speak for you and then you can get up once at a time, please.
Let me address that. My client is willing to accommodate reasonable conditions and Rota has actually suggested reasonable conditions, which I think are on the table now, but they are taking a little bit of a, you know, playing a little game of poker where they figure that they don't have to cut a deal because they know that the conditions that they're asking for, you'll likely give anyway. So either you deny us and they win, or you grant it.
There's going to be a house built there.
Yeah.
They understand.
There's no question.
Our ability to reach a deal is not that we can't agree on conditions, it's that Rota is, and I think fairly correct, that she's like, if she loses on the permit, she's likely to get the conditions anyway. And we don't object to the conditions that we've discussed. So it's not about necessarily trying to work it out, it's just about, you know, they're sort of hoping that they'll get the conditions if we get the permit and maybe we won't get the permit.
I think it's more important for my clients to have this board decide to comply with the bylaw than to have the conditions.
So I absolutely agree with, I absolutely agree with Rota. The problem is that she has suggested to you two legal standards that are not the correct legal standard. She has said that there are severe safety issues here you should be concerned about, which I don't think is factually accurate. And she has said that we haven't met the burden of showing you that we need this relief. And that's not the burden in the stat, in the bylaw. The bylaw is that we have a right to this permit with the conditions that you apply as long as it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And I haven't heard anyone say why having this little piece in the setback is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. All we're focusing on is traffic and noise and construction and parking and all stuff that has nothing to do with the actual construction and all stuff that the board has the ability to mitigate with conditions.
Well, I think the issue, Steve, is that we've been consistent and, in my opinion, not granted this type of relief. I also think with regard to whether it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, other neighbors have stated in letters and in person that they, when they were building their buildings, complied. And I don't see why we want to open the floodgate, so to speak, and say anybody can, I mean, obviously, anybody can come in here and ask, which is fine with us, but I don't see the reason to grant the relief when it could be done quite easily outside of the setback.
Ed, with all the respect, I think that the standard that you're articulating about new construction generally is for variance relief. And what we're dealing with here is akin to dozens and dozens of permits in town and in Cotfish Park and other places where there are undersized lots and houses that are in the setback and people come in to do a massive renovation of those houses.
I disagree with you, Steve.
Consistently allowed those permits.
Yeah, if you were going up in the setback, yes. But I mean, I can remember a number of cases where somebody has come in with a massive, as you put it, addition in the back of the house and we said, "No, you can't do that." Even though the house was in the setback, we did not allow them to put the big addition in the setback.
And that's been consistent.
I think we've been fairly consistent. I'm not going to say 100% of the time, but I think we've tried to say to the applicants, "Listen, you know, on your new portion of the house, meet the setbacks." I think that's only fair.
The only time I've heard this board differ on that is if it was impossible to do it. And you've heard from council that it is not impossible to do it. He doesn't want to go back to the HBC. And that's not a reason to grant it.
I mean, if there were a wetland that was forcing you into the corner, if there, if you, if there was something and not the Catalpa tree, which you're going to be cut, if this drawing is any real representation of the tree, you're cutting a third of it out anyway. So, you know, I just think we've been consistent on that and I don't see any reason to change that.
I think you have consistently granted permits for people to do alterations within the setback. And in this case, we are making it more conforming. And in this case, we are readily accepting of conditions that you regularly grant. And I have not heard one thing that says that this building being in the setback is actually proposing, is actually a negative. It is a residential use that's going to involve construction in town. That is not something that the board considers to be a negative.
Well, I think you've heard that the neighborhood, that it is substantially more detrimental. We understand that you can do it, but we also understand that you can meet the setback and there's no reason to grant it.
I personally don't want to sign my name to it. So, you know, that's just me. So I think we've heard everybody. I don't think anything's going to change but anything else. So how does the board feel about it?
I feel that, I feel that the, the interested parties had an opportunity to come up with a solution amongst themselves that would have probably worked much better than what's going to happen here today.
I agree.
And it's unfortunate. I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote to grant the relief. And hopefully, the builder and the building department require that the adjacent properties are protected.
Well, I mean, by law, you cannot, you know...
Well, yeah, but, you know...
I'm not saying it doesn't happen, but that's on them. I mean, that's on the builder.
Well, it's on the builder and it's on the, you know, it's on the abutters now to keep an eye on that and make sure that, you know, really, really, they should hire a geotechnical engineer. They should have a sure system designed to protect those properties.
Yeah, I think the building code adequately addresses that issue, Jeff.
Yeah, well, it really doesn't.
What's made the building code...
It doesn't.
Well, I mean, I don't know why my client should be held to a different standard than everybody else, but I appreciate that, I appreciate the concern that the neighbors should be protected.
I mean, they're not going to get held to a different standard. You know, they're going to get held to the same standard that everybody else does, which is...
By the building department, sure.
A little limited.
Yeah.
Anybody else want to pipe in?
In short, I'm not ready to open the floodgates because it sure would, in that direction, you'd see a lot of these coming in.
So, Michael?
I can go either way on this. If we decide to vote against this, this application, I'm going to take my phone number out of the phone book because I'll be getting 10 phone calls a day on why is construction going on, on that street? And wait, it's going to go, now it's two-way, it will be one-way.
That's what they want.
I'd like, I'd like the board to...
That's going to happen anyway, because, no offense, I live here year-round and that street is miserable year-round. And the fact that it's, there's going to be construction there, it's going to happen and at some period of time, when those portions of the project require it, it's going to be miserable there. And I don't think holding the threat of misery in the summer versus misery in the fall is an adequate reason to grant relief. How do you feel, Jim?
I, you know, I, I understand that this house can be built. I understand, it's going to be built and I understand the concern of the neighborhood, although I don't see where their concerns are going to be addressed, except that they don't want it built. The part that I don't understand is, we seem to have a difference in opinion about whether we grant this normally or not, which I defer to you all, and whether this will open up the floodgates. And if that's the case, I, you know, I would tend to side with most of the board members and not grant. However, if that's not the case, I, I would vote for it, just because I don't think that it's going to address any of these concerns.
I have, I have a pending application that I discussed with Alvin the other day. I'm looking for this kind of relief. And I've already told my client that I'm not going to do it because I think that with any kind of new construction, the board has been consistent. And I've heard enough of the cases and I totally, with all due respect, disagree with Mr. Cohen that the board has granted these before. I have never seen it in all my experience.
I don't think that's factually accurate, but...
I'm talking about new construction. This is new construction.
This is planned now.
I've been doing this 11 years. I've got dozens of these permits. Rota's been doing this for, you know, a lot longer than me and has hundreds of these permits under her belt. Sometimes you restrict them, sometimes you don't. I've never seen the board deny it. And I think what we're missing here is just, I haven't heard any, I, you know, I get that you like it or don't like it or feel that it's fair or not fair or whatever, but at the end of the day, I haven't heard anyone say why having this house is substantially detrimental to the neighborhood in the way that it's proposed. All the concerns are about bedrooms and construction.
I think you've heard...
I don't think the board has talked about bedrooms.
No.
I don't think the board is, I mean, the board, some of the board members have talked about construction methodology as a function of trying to protect the neighbors, so, which would be on your side, because I think they're saying that that would be a way to vote for it. So I don't quite agree with you there, Stephen.
We're fine without restrictions at this point.
If the, if the neighbors weren't here, this permit probably would be granted.
I don't think so. I don't think so. Or, or it might be granted, but you might not get a unanimous vote.
Okay.
So, I think we should move to vote unless there's some further discussion we want to have.
I, I just want to make sure that there's no, not going to be any common ground between the neighbors and the applicant.
We're open to it, but I don't know.
Well, would you like to continue one more month, or would you like to...
No, I don't think it's necessary. I've talked to all, not all my clients are here, there are people who aren't here, but we've talked about a stay-on if I was like that.
Would anyone like to go out into the hallway for two minutes and discuss it?
No, I don't think so. I think that they're pretty clear.
All right, well, then let's, let's move on. So, I'd like somebody to make a motion to, in the affirmative, to grant the relief as requested. And we'll vote on that.
With conditions or...
You, whoever, yeah, I would think if you're voting in the affirmative, one would want to impose...
Can you state the motion, please?
I'm, I'm trying to get to that. Thank you. I'm obviously not doing a very good job, but I'm trying. So, I mean, that's how we normally do it, in the affirmative, correct?
Okay.
And then we vote on that, correct, Eleanor?
Yes, yes, we vote to approve.
Right. So, if you...
I'll make the motion that we approve the application under the conditions that there is no exterior construction or demolition or digging from Memorial Day weekend. So, what's, what's the official date downtown?
September 19th.
September 19th.
Fifteen, yeah.
Fifteen.
Can we extend that to Columbus? Maybe we can do whatever we want.
And obviously, there would be no parking on the street by any construction crews. When necessary, the applicant would hire police detail for pumping concrete, lumber deliveries. Would, would have to be regulated.
Yeah. Michael, if I could just, I think the planning board usually covers that through a construction protocol to be approved through staff as a way to try to avoid having to do it at the table.
All right. What else am I missing? Oh, that, that the contiguous boundaries are protected during construction and that there, there is a protocol plan for that, mitigation plan. That would be submitted to the administrator three, four weeks prior to implementation. And I think that, that does it.
Okay. Does anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second it.
All right. So, the motions been made and seconded. Any further discussion? I, I'd like to discuss it just briefly. I mean, many of those things you can't do anyway. You can't park on the street. There is no parking.
No, I, I agree. They can park on the sidewalk.
No, you can't on that street. I mean, there, there is no parking on either side.
No, no, I understand. I'm not talking about legal parking.
Well, you can't, so if I'm building a...
Drive up the main street right now.
But there's legal parking there.
In the no parking areas, this construction truck everywhere.
Well, that, that's a police enforcement issue. That's not a ZBA issue. And a police detail for if you're blocking the street as a condition, that's a requirement if you're blocking the street. You, if, if, so if the concrete truck is there, they can't block the street. They need to have a detail. So, I don't think we're, I just don't want, I don't want, I don't mind the condition. I just don't want to paint the picture to the neighbors that they're getting something that they wouldn't arguably get anyway. So, having said that, let's, let's vote. It's, it's been, the motion's been made and seconded unless anybody wants to discuss that further. No. All right, so, again, an affirmative vote grants the relief as requested with the conditions. And a vote, a nay vote obviously denies it. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Nay. So, that does not work.
Well, what, on what basis? So, you, you just have a failed motion, but you don't actually have a denial.
Okay, fair enough. I always thought that...
I would say that's a denial.
I always thought that was a denial myself, but...
Well, you haven't provided any due basis for the denial. If, if you're going to, if you're going to give a denial, a flat-out denial, I think you need to provide what the basis for that denial is. And I don't think that you, there aren't any articulated.
I, I think they, they were provided in everyone's, like...
What, you have to make findings of what those, what the basis is for denial?
Eleanor, I'm going to have to defer to you. I mean, we have never, in my...
He's an expert in the background.
Go ahead, Marcus.
Making a motion to approve and then not getting the votes to approve defeats the motion. If the intent is to deny, then you would have to make the motion to deny and approve it. And then, well, you might have some kind of cause.
It wasn't a motion to deny, it was a motion to approve.
That's how you always do it. You always do an affirmative, then you have people vote on it.
Okay, fair enough. We can, we can move on to the motion to deny and, and with the finding that it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood to put the house in the setback. We have no prob, I mean, we're not talking about anything else, safety, you know, number of bedrooms or anything, any of the above. So, I guess would somebody make that motion?
I'll make the motion to deny the application on the basis that it is more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay. I'll second. All right, any further discussion? Do you have, I'm going to give Stephen a moment here in the hope.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve with the, I'm kidding. Just wanted to see your face then. So, if the board is not inclined to grant the relief, then we will withdraw and build a right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, we need to make a motion to let the applicant, so you're, you're...
Withdraw with no prejudice, yes.
Right, so, we need to vote on the notion of a withdrawal without prejudice. So, if somebody wants to make that. So, let's go back to Jeff's motion that was made and seconded. And so, we are not...
It's void, though, now.
Yeah, we're not going to vote on that.
Right.
So, you rescind your...
So, I'll, I'll withdraw my motion.
And you withdraw your second, I assume, Karen. All right, so now we're back to a withdrawal without prejudice. So, will somebody make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? And all those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Okay, so, 2116 Lily Six Ollie Street, which is continued to October 13th, 2016. So, we're now on 3016 Kaplan Family Nominee Trust, Eight Harborview Way. Let's take a quick, quick break, if you don't mind.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Yeah, usually, that's my job as the man that takes a lot out of me, too, sometimes. Yep. Yeah, he doesn't move much from there. He's a, he's a permanent fixture of the garden. He's a garden gnome at this point.
Well, if you're seconding it...
He's got a new one back.
And like, simply is like, terrible. So, the standard for markets is way higher than the standard for us.
What's up? Want to go on with your vacation?
I do, I want to get back to vacation.
I would have stayed on your case, I was afraid tools going to lose, you know? Well, we not show up to that, so it's lovely to hear.
Of course he would have said something. He thought right.
I'm on vacation. Well, this is true vacation. I did. I actually did. I was driving, I was going from Boston itself anyway, so I fucked it up.
Paul, will you drive it over?
No kicking in the curb.
I think I don't want to go there.
You ready? Okay, we back. Terry, you good?
I'm good.
Eleanor? Okay, so, back, we'll start, we'll restart. 21, no. 3016 Kaplan Family Nominee Trust. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We have to, we want to do the continuances. So, do we have to vote each one of these? I suppose so. 416 McKinnon. We already voted that to be continued to September 8th, so it's only the new ones. 2016 Gerald T...
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Continue to September 8th, 2016?
Yep.
Michael seconded. Any further discussion? Anybody in the audience? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, 6 Lily Street LLC, Wisconsin Partners LLC, 6 and 8 Lily Street. This is, we're, we're continuing both of these without op, oh, no, Venta was open. This one, we're continuing without opening. 2416 was the number.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
To October 13th, 2016? Okay. Karen seconded. Any further discussion? Anybody in the audience? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. 3216 Alan Ashuck, trustee of the NF Ashuck Qualified Personal Residence Trust. Again, we'd like to see the notion is to continue it to October 13th, 2016 without opening.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Lisa and Karen did that again. Anybody in the audience for that? No. Any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. Okay, so 3016 Kaplan Family Nominee Trust, Eight Harborview Way, for the applicant.
Thank you, members of the commission. Mark Porre representing the applicant. Bruce and Madeline Kaplan are the Kaplan Family Nominee Trust, who are here in the audience with me today, as well as Andrew Bennett, who has been doing the lion's share of all the building that's been in place since their ownership for about 16 years at Eight Harborview Way. I think that all of you know that the Brandpoint area has sustained major flooding components down there over the years and doesn't seem to be getting any better. We're here today to have you look at a proposal. And I want to speak to the special permit first because I think that that may be something that you can wrap your heads around a little easier than the alternative, which would be variance relief under another section of the zoning bylaws. This project before us has gone through the approval process with both the Conservation Commission and with the Historic District Commission, who has essentially endorsed our request to elevate this building by 40 inches above its current standard. The building itself is certified in a document that is in your package by Nantucket Surveyors. I believe that document is page 151 of your agenda. And you'll note on my, my paperwork, I've put in red indicating the page numbers that are part of your packet so that you can have a direct reference to that. The Nantucket Surveyors has certified that the current ridge height of the building is at 30.7 feet, which makes it non-conforming as to our ridge height restriction based on standard zoning as measured for average mean grade. So, we have a non-conforming situation only as it relates to the actual height of the existing building now. And every other aspect on the property, the property is conforming into lot area, frontage setbacks, and the like as presented in one of the surveys that's in your package as well. So, initially, what we're here seeking is your endorsement that you would allow us to continue to exceed the ridge height limitations that currently exist by elevating this building by the standards that were approved by the HDC on this property so that we can go about our building project. The, if you understand, this is a 1920s structure that's on the property. Kaplan's have owned for 16 years. There's been a number of different alteration projects that have taken place. And Andrew Bennett has been involved and has exposed some of the framing in the building. And he can attest to indications when walls have been opened up to levels of saltwater staining that have taken naturally in place above our floor level in the, in the current house. The existing floor level threshold is at elevation 6 in this area. We are...
Did you say that again?
Our existing floor level is elevation 6. When we are in an area where the flood zone, the flood zone standard for this area is elevation 87 by the new NAV data that... elevation eighty-seven by the new NAV data that we've taken on since the nineteen thirty-four data was basically done away with. In all the projects that I've done in the Brant Point area over the past four years, we have always set the top of the foundation at elevation eight. Now, there is a contrast between some of the code issues here, and I'm sure that Mr. Berry would speak to that, if you have a question about it, that effectively says that the minimum floor elevation in an eighty-seven zone, which is coastal flood zone, is elevation seven. The two thousand and nine edition of the existing building code effectively says that the elevation should be the base flood elevation seven plus one feet. What they don't take into account as they develop these minimum standards is what we call the design flood elevation, that effectively says that you should take non-pressure preservative materials, electrical and plumbing, and have them situated above the minimum flood plain standards, what they call the design flood elevation. The design flood elevation allows for an increase in the elevation height of the building, as well as what the firm code calls the freeboard. Freeboard says, let's, let's be safer. Let's, let's go to a safer standard than the minimum, because we know that things aren't going to get better in the future. So, although we're at elevation eighty-seven in terms of our current flood zone in Brant Point area, we border directly on elevation eight on the Children's Beach area, field, and everything like that. It's hard to draw a distinction between that, other than that firm has just set a line and said, here's elevation seven, here's elevation eight. Well, tell that to the floodwaters that are coming up through there. In addition to that, obviously, at the boat ramp, which is just three hundred yards down, down the street from them, that's a velocity zone. So, we're, we're in a critical area where applying minimum standards to this building don't make any common sense when you're going to go to the expense of lifting this building. So, we have sought and obtained approval from the Historic District Commission to elevate this building to forty inches. It was a unanimous decision. There was, there was no discussion about it. They felt that that was an appropriate response. They felt that the adjustments that we were making to the building in terms of new steps, railings, et cetera, were appropriate to the historic nature of this building, which is, as far as the National Reserve Service is concerned, is considered a contributing structure on Nantucket. So, we feel that we have approached this as a rational, very common sense, safety factor built in here to get us to where we are, and we are at that point that we're asking you for initially relief under the special permit rule that would allow us to elevate this building, because we're already nonconforming, or in the alternative, get into variance relief under the height limitation restrictions in a flood zone. I don't want to go there at the moment if we feel that this is a proper response to representing our project for this commission and getting you to honor our request. So, to that end, I'd like to introduce Mr. Kaplan and Madeline Kaplan here, and Andrew Bennett to speak about their sixteen years and the problems they've had down there.
Good afternoon. My name is Bruce Kaplan. My wife, Madeline Kaplan. We've been coming to Nantucket since the mid-eighties. We bought this house in February two thousand. In two thousand and four or five, or four to five, we did a major renovation of the kitchen and back part of the house, and Mr. Andy Bennett did it. And we were talking last week, and I just casually said to him that we were coming in front of this commission to see if we can get approval for raising of the house to the height that Mark Porre has just mentioned to you. And Andy reminded me, and I saw it, that when the sheetrock was stripped in our house on, in two thousand and five, let's call it, the salt staining was well over a foot higher than our finished floor level. Fast forward to the winter of two thousand and fifteen, which is just sixteen months ago. My son, who works, lives here full-time and works on the island, came over to check on the house during the storm, and the water, he had to actually go get waders, had to go back and get waders, because he couldn't approach the house. The water was up to the threshold of our front door, which is Eight Harborview Way, the middle house of the five facing Children's Beach. And on the other side, our neighbor Judy Collins happened to take a picture from her porch of the water up to the split rail on the park. So, all we're asking for, I don't understand all the nuances, although Mark Porre's explained to me at least ten times, of the various issues and base flood elevation and stuff, but our reasonable request is, the water has already proven to be up well above our floor level, and as recently as sixteen months ago, was up to our threshold. We are hoping to get permission from this commission to raise our house to a level that we can all hope will last us five, ten, fifteen years of safety and not flooding out the house. And I've asked Mr. Bennett to come, just because I'm the owner and no one should believe what I'm saying, and he could just verify what he saw when he did the construction.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name's Andrew Bennett, and yes, ten years ago or so, we did notice a really well-defined salt line, one to two feet off the floor level. Still exists, I suspect, if you open up some of the walls in the living room, but it was pretty interesting. I have no idea what event caused it, whether it was no name or, or one of the bigger storms back in the thirties or so, but I'm just here to acknowledge the presence of that staining.
Thanks. Okay. So, are you finished, Mark?
Initially, I'm finished. I mean, obviously, I'm here to, to answer any questions or concerns that you have about this, but we're basically following the approval that's in place by the Historic District Commission, which really is the key approval here. I don't think we're doing anything that's out of the ordinary for the area, and we're building in a little safety factor into the floor system, and we think it's an appropriate response to this, this particular location.
So, currently, the finished floor is at what elevation?
Six.
Six?
Then it gets wet by a.
And you'd like to raise finished floor to elevation eight? Finished floor.
Finished floor at forty inches is what we have approved by the HDC.
Nine point four or five.
Nine point four-five, five feet.
Nine point.
That takes all of our non-pressure preservative-treated lumber material that makes up the physical content of the first floor up above our foundation.
So, like, if it had lost.
The building department is telling you no?
The building, the building department is technically telling through Marcus that, we need relief from this board. They're not, they haven't denied us the opportunity, or even written a letter saying we've denied the project. They're just saying, you really should seek relief from this board, because we, we look at the minimum standard.
Right. You only need relief because you're going that extra foot.
We're, we're going up higher.
Yeah. If you were only going to the minimum standard of what's on the base map, you'd be fine.
We'd be fine, because we're actually, our, our top of foundation to the ridge or the finished floor to ridge is under the thirty-deep limitation imposed by Article sixty of Town Leading in England. But we can't apply that standard, because we're actually taking the building higher.
So, what would that standard, what would that height be if you met that requirement? What would the ridge height be if you met that requirement? Or what was?
You mean, at the minimum standard?
Yeah.
It would be approximately, let's see, elevation seven, it would be thirty-two, somewhere around in there?
So, you're going up an extra two?
Thirty-four and a half.
Yeah, two and a half feet.
Something like that, yeah.
What's the, can you tell me what the, what the floor level is of Collins's house, right next door?
Well, the interesting thing that.
Finished floor?
The Collins's house is under the, the only data I can find on that house was under the old net, nineteen thirty-four datum, which said that the, and there was a discrepancy here. One document said that the floor level was at elevation eight under the old rules, and the other one said it was eight point six from the same surveying company. So, it was, it was never established that, but that was under the old rule. Under the new rule, we're effectively supposed to be up almost sixteen inch higher than that elevation, depending upon what the, how you interpret the BFE, or how you interpret the design flood elevation, which is everything rolled into the BFE plus one foot plus the freeboard component in that. So, you'll find a very extensive report by Steve Goan, who is the engineer on our project, that effectively attests to how we arrived at where we are, and how, as a design professional, that the information that's being made available here, and will be made available to the building department, should have some weight in terms of what we're doing in terms of being beyond the minimum flood standards, which is ridiculous to try and raise this building a foot for the cost of raising this building. And what we know is elevation eight, which is basically the middle of the street in front of the house, and what we know is a velocity zone. It doesn't make any sense economically to do this. So, we went to the HDC, which, where we built ours, to see if they would endorse our project.
Well, the road, the Harborview Way is not at elevation eight.
I'm sorry?
Harborview Way.
You mean the actual surface?
Yeah.
No, no, no.
The flood line is right down.
The flood elevation on our lot is eighty-seven, and in front of the house, it's eighty-eight, and then out where the ramp is, it's a velocity zone. So, you can't divorce one from the other, as far as I'm concerned, and be prudent about the design project. So, the road surface area is more like elevation four as it slopes up.
So, you're going to be roughly five, almost five and a half feet above the, the road? If that's at four.
We're going to be, our finished floor level is currently four and a half feet above our current grade on the lot. And that takes all of our non-pressure treated material that exists in the floor framing, nineteen twenty floor framing, up and above the water area, which is where it ultimately should be to protect this historic structure. Shouldn't be immersed anymore, or have a chance to be immersed, in any kind of flood waters, if we're doing the right thing to this building.
How much wiggle room are you building in above elevation eight?
Four inches.
No. Well, elevation eight, you would only have to have your finished floor at elevation eight. In the velocity zone, your structure is out of the, so your structure is completely out of elevation eight if you're in the BFE cell. So, it's a foot, it's more than a foot.
Our framing structure is, by virtue of the way it was constructed, is thirteen point two five inches. That's the amount of material that's non-pressure preservative-treated. So, at, at the ultimate, you could say, well, put your top of foundation at elevation eight and take all your framing above it, and be at nine point one-two-five feet instead of nine point four-four-five feet.
So, yeah, that's right. And so, the velocity zone requires you to put all your framing outside of that, so your top of foundation would be at elevation eight. If you're in the eight zone, which is the A.
A D A.
That allows you to have your finished floor at elevation eight. So, it's, it's really the floor sandwich difference that you're looking at, but it looks like it's a, it's a, around thirty inches from where you're required to be, where you wouldn't need any relief. You were asking the building to be thirty inches higher.
You wouldn't need any relief under the height of limitations in a flood zone.
Right.
But we're saying that.
You want to go that extra.
Economically, it doesn't make sense to not meet better measure of the standard to get all the framing material that exists out of the water. And as far as I know, there were no objections or any objections from any of the others related to this project.
Okay, I see some building department representatives. Do you, are you here to speak to this?
Just if you have questions.
Well, how do we feel about this? You know, there, there is some common sense?
I have no problem. If the HDC agrees to it, I don't see this being reasonable.
And, and there was no.
To get these things, you know, that much higher above the flood plain, it just makes sense.
Do the, front steps would obviously be larger than they are now.
Correct.
Are they out of the setback?
Absolutely.
So, there's no other.
We're not making any non-conformities to the structure, other than the elevation component.
Is this an accurate setback, doggone?
It should be. It's, I blew that one up, so you can see that when the Kaplans subdivided the small cottage out of their lot, that when they did that, they were inclined with all the zoning setbacks off of air conditioning units and every other feature that remain on their lot.
And the front year setback is ten feet?
It's zero now, because it's ROH.
Oh, they changed it to ROH.
Yes, they changed to ROH, so it's zero.
So, there won't be a problem with the steps?
Uh, okay.
Is the, this, not relative necessarily, but is the nineteen thirty-seven half-tide datum not relevant anymore?
Not relevant. Hasn't been relevant for two or three years now.
I mean, I think I can get my mind around this a little easier, because it's a historic structure. I'd be a little less inclined if it were brand new.
Maybe.
I was, I guess, I mean, I almost drowned on their steps in the last storm.
It would be.
I was going that way, so, the higher, the better.
Could be much happier. The next day, I should climb up their steps.
I'll somewhere to save myself.
I was going to say, it would be spec for pressure-treated lumber if it was a new building, and they wouldn't have to go this high.
Well, I think arguably, you'd still try to go that high, because, just because your floor is flowing over that one, you know, half an inch.
The writings on the wall aren't getting any better.
Right. That's if you believe in global warming, Karam.
Yeah, well, you know, it's a, it's a tale that everyone keeps telling me. I haven't seen any.
So, anyway, does anybody else in the audience want to speak about this? So, if we, if no one has any real problem?
Are we going to do, we're going to do timing, since it's the ROH?
Sure. Time away.
Is that a part of the schedule?
We're, we're hoping to get our permit released, so we can start construction November one.
Okay, so you're fine with that?
Yeah.
So, just to.
The standard.
The standard.
Mandate.
Yeah.
Will not adapt. Hopefully.
That would be my only condition, I think.
Yeah, there's no, you're, you're simply adding to the foundation that's there.
That's correct.
So, we don't have to worry about the neighbors, signage, parking.
No additions to it at all.
Police details.
Is this a, a foundation or?
It's concrete block foundation.
Block.
Yeah. It'll have flood banks and the like.
Yeah, okay. So, are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion.
To grant the relief with, as requested, with the condition of no exterior construction September fifteenth? No.
Yeah. In one world, it is September fifteenth.
All right.
Second.
Karam seconded. Any further discussion on that? So, who's voting? The five regular members? Yeah. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Can you, can you? No.
One, two, three, four, five.
I'm not going to sit on the center.
Still, who?
You should have run an espresso.
Laura's hit.
But Michael was chairman.
He didn't have espresso. It wasn't even.
Other than you said.
Okay. Thirty-one sixteen, Laura F. Hanson, fifty-five Center Street, for the applicant.
For the, for the applicant, Paul Jensen. Here before you, seeking a permit, special permit on a house built in late seventeen hundreds, to add a foundation or replace the foundation under it. You have a plot plan in front of you. I have a letter that didn't make it in, from the surveyor. I misspoke. This, this, this house, as the plot plan shows, on one side is three point eight feet. On the front, I think it's about six feet, and on the other side, it completely conforms with zoning, and on the back, it does. It's got two structures in the back, which we're not touching or doing anything, and I don't know what their status is at all. They don't show up on old sandborne maps, but we're not going to touch those. My clients, since applying, originally thought they were going to do a full foundation under this, but they actually are going to do a crawl space under at least half of the main dwelling, because there's a chim, a huge chimney in the middle of it. And they may do a crawl space under the whole thing, but the only part that's in the setback is the front half, so they may do the back half. And they're also doing a conforming addition off the back. It's a, it's a renovation of the back L, basically, and it completely conforms. It's a, it's a renovation of the back L, basically, and it completely conforms. The main, because there's a, it's a, it's a complex zoning, but I'll just say that the house is non-conforming for sure as to height. In my application, I said it was thirty point, thirty feet, eight inches, but that was actually thirty point eight feet, which is actually thirty inches, thirty feet and ten inches. That's how high it is.
But there's no change to that. You're putting it right back down.
We're going to make no substantial change. I would hope the board would just say no substantial if we're an inch taller or an inch shorter after we add the foundation. We don't have to come back.
I would try not to go an inch taller.
What?
I would not go an inch taller.
Right. But I try not to.
Well, why don't you just not go an inch shorter?
Okay, we'll, we will not go an inch taller.
I don't like the substantial thing because you could come in with two inches higher and what's to?
Or a foot higher.
They don't want to get higher. They don't want to change anything.
I think they should have a very good surveyor on site when they mark the top of foundation.
Here's the letter, a letter from the Teket surveyor, which says, we'll hold this height.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
I love how the, the surveyor, who was supposed to be relatively.
Approximately.
Is approximately thirty feet, ten inches. I mean, no offense.
Well, the, I think that's because the depth of the caps, shingles at the top.
Yeah.
Probably varies.
Along the, on the length of the ridge? I'm going to buy that.
But you're hoping like half inch?
I haven't been buying much of the way you can say it today.
Although at the ends, at the actual ends of the building, you see a lot of even new buildings, you see it flares up a little. It's not supposed to, but it does.
Well, it's also in an older building, the ridge might have sagged.
The middle of it usually, yeah.
And I'd just like to add a couple more facts. One, my client, Laura Hanson, she knocked on the doors of all her neighbors. And the one next door that it's closest to loves the project, has no problem with it at all, showed them the plans. She didn't get the one on the other side that it's conforms with, and she got across the street. And you should have a letter from one of her neighbors in support. Nobody that she contacted, and she contacted everybody that has had any problems with this project. In addition, and she, she doesn't really know this, but she has rights in that way. It's three point eight feet from a private way that's on a land court plan. And she has rights in that way, and while I can't confirm in the, I haven't done the complete title, I have, I did her title, and I saw that she does have rights in that, and I have a handout for you. She probably owns to the middle line of that way. But in, in all respects, that's her neighbor's driveway, and she's not going to disturb it. She will, she's talked to some people, and they're going to shore it up along the property line there so that, and I'm not an engineer, so that there's no sloughing.
Well, arguably, if they're only doing the crawl space, they don't have to worry too much about it generally when it's a full foundation.
And that's probably one of the reasons they want to do the crawl space in the front. So I would like.
So the person that wrote the letter is non-abutter. They live across the street?
They live across the street.
When are you proposing to do the work?
We would happily live within the summer restriction. They do not want to do this work in the summer.
So we're not blessing a real site plan with the conforming addition on it because we don't have that, correct?
Right, and the, the conforming addition is, we're not seeking relief for the addition. We're seeking only relief to put, to lift the house up and put a foundation underneath it.
Does it have an asphalt roof now or wood?
I don't know what the roof is.
Because if it was asphalt now and they switched to wood, it could arguably be a problem. A zoning violation.
I think they can't switch to wood in town, can they? Oh, they, well, treated.
It's fireproof.
Fireproof wood.
Fire-treated.
No, I don't think they don't, I mean.
Is there an existing foundation under there now, or is it just rubble and?
I've ne, I haven't seen it. I haven't had a report. I think it is mostly a kind of a rubble foundation.
Curious you even have to come in here just to replace the foundation.
Think you're going to break back to the same height?
We're above.
I'm surprised that you even have to come here if you're not.
They're going to be dislocating the house from the foundation.
Yeah, they're, they're within that setback.
No, I understand they're within, but I mean, you can, through just the A relief, if you're adding within the setback, you can do it.
You could have done it for the nearest.
You felt that I was too meat.
I didn't say anything. This is all on the.
That's what everyone else said.
I have one thing.
No, go ahead.
I did, we first asked the ZA if she would do this, and she said she'd been, she wanted to get, find out from you guys, from the board, if they thought this was a good idea, or did the whole board need to do this?
I have a question.
Go ahead, please, correct.
I had a conversation, and I said you can absolutely take the risk of doing this through ZA relief, technically merits by all, however, given some recent cases, you may want to go for the ZB. I gave him the choice and he chose to.
Just curious. Okay, anyway, I thought maybe I said something. Okay, Lisa's going to make the motion to grant relief as requested.
With the typical construction timing issues.
Are we giving them any leeway on the elevation?
No, they're going to adhere to that, and.
Paul's just going to write approximately thirty.
Will be thirty, ten inches or below.
And do we, are we concerned, Paul's represented, they're only going to do a crawl space, therefore I don't think we need to get into the whole crawl.
I think the crawl space is on part of it.
I assumed, I maybe wrongly, that it was the front part, so the part that's close to the setback. So we won't get into that? But if it turns into a basement, are we worried?
No.
I mean, in terms of this driving sheet, I mean, we've certainly gone into it with other applicants.
But they were much closer. This is right.
There was a reason why we, we got interested in that. Because remember when Orange Street was caving in? Wasn't that long ago?
It was a long time.
Well, it was seven years ago, maybe. And then we had the same issue on India Street.
Huh?
Yeah.
What, what shops?
I can't remember what house, but obviously you guys weren't involved. Were you involved on Orange?
Absolutely. No, not, not if there's a problem.
No, there wasn't any, anything in the road to protect it.
Yeah, I think it's a legitimate concern, so all I'm saying is that the applicant has represented that the front portion of the building, the part portion that's close to the setback, is going to be a crawl space, and that should be in the decision, and if it changes, you would have to come back.
Well, Paul, we still have to support, raise that chimney, even if it is massive, if we're going to lift the house.
Yeah, I don't get that, but.
I don't know, you, you would know more about how they're going to do this, but.
Maybe they're going to hold the, the building in place.
And build a block underneath it?
Hold the building in place and, Jesus.
Yeah, you could go, couldn't you, sort of, assuming it's a center chimney mass?
And you have to interpret it.
Anyway, he's represented it's a crawl space, so.
I'll make that part of my motion.
Okay. You got that?
The addition to my motion?
The addition is that it's a crawl space, not a full foundation.
In the front part of the house.
In the front part of the house.
And I can have a little, we can do a little bit way up the height.
No. You were the one who said no, so now you're waffling. We all were going to give them wiggle room.
Well, wait a minute, you can amend the, you can amend the motion.
Please, please amend, because I would hate to come back here for like a half inch over.
I'll give you an inch.
Thank you.
That's all he needs.
He'll take more.
Yeah. Okay, so Lisa's sort of made a motion.
An inch on the building height.
Sort of thirty feet eleven.
Thirty feet eleven.
Thirty feet ten plus or minus an inch.
Yeah.
Plus an inch.
You can go mi, plus an inch, minus, we don't care about. But that should be clear that minus is okay.
Yes.
Okay, so that motion's been made. Who wants to second that?
I'll second that.
Jeffrey's seconded it. So any further discussion? No. Mark, you want to sit this one out?
Yeah.
Three, four, five? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
All right, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you. All right, the other business is only election of Lisa as chairman.
No, no way. I make a much better co-captain than I do a captain. That's evidenced by today's hearing.
I think your time is coming.
No, no, no.
You need a little more time in this job. You need to get yourself.
Actually, my term is up.
You know, Ed, with the forty B still in process, we can't change.
I feel fairly seasoned.
I actually think that Jeff's got a good point again, and that we keep the existing officers for another year.
I'm up next year, so who knows if I'm going to really be up anyway?
Well, that's, that's.
You're up for longer. You don't expire for.
Hopefully a long time.
Your term doesn't expire for another three years. Eleanor had that someplace.
Yeah.
Good, so Ed is primed to do the term.
Well, technically, two years, seventeen and eighteen, and part of nineteen, yeah, probably three years. Seems like a sentence. I'll do it one more year, but then I think somebody else needs to begin to think about manning up.
Was that a motion?
I'll make a motion to leave the current slate of officers as they are.
I mean, this assumes that my other officers are okay with it.
I'll be state.
Susan, you'll be the clerk for another year.
Well, the whole slate, he's making a motion for the whole slate.
The whole slate.
I'm okay as a clerk unless somebody else wants to be clerk, which I don't know.
What you do?
Well, I don't know.
It's a very.
I only step in if you two, I mean, I'm only, like, I step in as chair of Lisa.
It's really been a problem. You have not been upholding clerkly duty.
Somebody kept on vice chair, too.
We record everything. Wouldn't a clerk be the one writing it down? We don't need to do that anymore.
It's a throwback.
Linda Williams still used to take notes, even while Terry was hyping. That was for herself, though, I think, right?
Does she see? Let's not emulate Linda.
So the motion was made and seconded.
It was? I didn't call for a second.
I'll second it.
All right.
There, there's my clerkly duty.
Any further discussion?
Anybody who's not here, could you also, or now?
Yes, I can.
And before we get to that, is anybody not here on September? September eighth.
September eighth.
If you know that you're not going to be here September eighth or September thirteenth?
Okay.
October thirteenth.
Let me, let me finish this one thing, because then we have a few other things to discuss. So all those in favor of the current slate, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so that's done. So September eighth, we all think we're here?
Yep.
Has any thing been done in terms of McKinnon and the Board of Selectment? Totally bizarre.
Well, as far as Board of Selectmen, I don't, I haven't been made aware of anything. I mean, I've been listening to the Board of Select meetings, I didn't listen last night, so I don't know.
Will you, will you check and just shoot me an email?
I haven't been made aware of anything.
I asked Leslie when you were out, and she called Erica, who had not heard of anything. But the whole thing seems bizarre.
I think that this week for sure may have happened last night, but I don't think so. I'll double check.
All right, yeah.
What happens if he wants to come back on September thirteenth, then he's not here? Somebody else has the stuff.
Well, the only person who's refused is Jeff, so, and Mark has been at the table?
Good.
Well, you know, quite frankly, it's becoming, it's going to become an ongoing issue because as he strings it out, or any applicant strings it out, the likelihood of one of us, you know, missing over the course of the year is very, very high.
But you can miss one meeting.
No, I know that, but I'm simply saying it's hard to maintain continuity, continuity, so.
So you can all invite him whenever, and, and should it become necessary for different people to sign, that's it, and the last one, which may, and then Mark of also all of them appear.
Okay.
So the other point of business is simply that there have been, has been some difficulty in getting some of the decisions signed. My personal feeling is there's, you know, there should be some reasonable amount of time to get it signed, and just because it's pressing business, that is not. Because it's pressing business to somebody else, doesn't mean I should have to rush in there and do it. And sometimes we do get the email that says, you know, this is time-sensitive. Oh, everything's time-sensitive. My time is time-sensitive.
I don't, you may abuse that, but.
Yeah, I'm just simply saying, I don't think that needs to be added. Every application arguably is time-sensitive. But having said that, Eleanor is experiencing some difficulty getting people to sign, so please.
Well, I would say reasonable, and I've been around here for a while. Reasonable is having to go down to the town and sign something every ten days to two weeks. That's reasonable for me.
Okay. How does everyone else feel about that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, in, in theory, I don't mind doing it. I love it when Eleanor brings them to me.
Yeah, and I like that, too. And we vote for that.
I frankly just forget. It's like, you know, I go through my email, oh, yeah, I'll do that tomorrow. And then you were out, and somebody else was emailing, and I just totally forgot about it. So it's, but I agree. I mean, I think you, we have to at least have a week. I mean, it's not like we can drop everything and run over there because somebody wants a signature.
I think a week is an absolute minimum to begin their work.
I think it's fair.
So do I. So please, try to, everyone, try to maintain a week to two weeks.
Well, I'll try to do it with a.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we're.
And you can't come in, you don't mean I'll come to you. I just need you to tell me.
I know. Well, I know, and I pitched it the last time you said, not very mobile.
Twenty-two day.
Well, the, the, that, that would be the.
I just, I wasn't looking at you.
The signatures are something that we don't approve is probably the most important in time sensitive.
Yeah, now, if it's, if there's a issue that there's going to be, you know, some, but there is no constructive grant once we voted, I don't think. Is there a time period under which the application, the, the decision has to be written and signed?
There is a very strict time frame, yes.
Okay.
Well, well, that, that, that's interesting because that's if the board writes the decision.
The decision has to be written, it's not really sitting in, I don't know, who writes it?
Well, there are lawyers that don't write the decision for six weeks.
Yeah, so that's not on us.
No, 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 I know, but I'm usually writing the decisions. But I work with attorneys sometimes with somebody highly complicated, like Arthur Ween. I was here for that hearing, and I asked Arthur to write the decision, which I did. I looked at, you know, I checked with him, and the person's in those cases.
Is that normal that you write all of them?
If the attorney offered to do it, I am happy to let him do it.
I always, that's news to me. Because the attorney always wrote the decision unless it was a denial.
No.
Or unless, unless there wasn't an attorney, and it was some, somebody that had the home court advantage because they're here, and yes, the board would write the decision.
To be honest, there are some attorneys, and it's definitely, I can tell you, some attorneys very specifically don't want to put more, don't want to have more available to their clients, they have to decisions for that specific reason, and then others.
incited to make decisions without specific reason, and then others.
That's very, highly unusual, as far as I'm concerned. Highly unusual.
It is actually. So I do about fifty to sixty percent of decisions, and then, even if the attorney sent them, I still verify that everything's okay. I don't just accept it as based on. Yeah, players are getting some free legal work.
And there may be some liability, too. I don't know.
Well, but the flip side of that, Michael, is that we have Eleanor writing the decision and arguably looking out for our interests, the board's interests, instead some.
Love that they would try us.
Yeah, not that any lawyers are shady, might try to slip something in, and I know everybody reads those decisions word for word, but something might occasionally slip by.